Are you safe to go there?
Where should I go?
I think that's how you said.
Did I?
I think it's not there.
Without having to... Do the wider... They use the one at least... At least the ones we can just put there or the one that's on there.
The other ones that we already have, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that doesn't...
Is it because it's work session?
People out here would like to hear what you're saying. Say hi Bob. Hi Bob.
Morning everybody. At least welcome everybody to our workshop. I know Brian has to leave early, so he had a couple of announcements or a couple of things he wanted to say about Medline?
Yeah, I don't know if you all need to scroll through what I did with lighting last week.
Sure.
So, last week I spent pretty much all my free time dealing with Medline and lighting and everything. But I did talk to Matt, the lighting rep, pretty extensively on this. So we reviewed the plan that I got last Monday or whenever it was before the meeting. And I'm glad that we put the time into it, because there were some things on there that, you know, didn't make sense, you know, the lighting pole on. He had said that the amber lighting came up all the way up the driveways, but the poles only came up halfway.
Okay.
So things like that we straightened out. So, he's revised the plan a couple of times, we looked at it in a couple of different configurations. So he's got the amber lighting coming up all the way up the driveways now, like he said he was going to.
Okay.
All three of them had issues with that, so that's all been fixed. The lighting on the northern, I guess it's the northeastern corner, where it's got that angle. I wanted him to pull all the lighting off of that, off the building as he could. So he did do that, which will reduce some of the lighting impacts to the north, which where there's some residences. And then all the poles along the western side, which is along four sixteen, had him eliminate the pole near, nears to four sixteen on the corner. It's going to require some reduction in parking spaces for the trucks, but they didn't look like they would be that usable anyway in the newer ability.
Sure.
So they've pulled the lightings far away from four sixteen and still maintained their minimums, lighting that they're requesting. And then he also added shielding to all the lighting fixtures along four sixteen.
He did?
He did.
Wonderful.
So, we've made quite a bit of inroads on that.
Okay.
The lighting levels, I think that he's got are more than adequate in most parking areas. I think that they could probably come down even more, but I don't know if anybody else was supporting that, so I don't know if we'll push that issue too much.
Okay.
I figure if we wanted to, we could do that at Site One Review. Justin's email from Mazer here recommended a minimum of point two foot candles in the main drive aisles. Right now they're about point six, so they're about three times that. But that's up for you guys to, you know, decide if you want to help push them that a little bit.
But other than that, we're in pretty good shape then?
I think so. I mean, I think the plan matches the FBI S best we can.
Okay.
So, moving forward, we'll look at a little bit more of the inside plan.
Okay.
I think that'd be helpful. I did talk to Rich about that. Lighting on the building, with the building being white, you know, it may illuminate some of the buildings, so I don't know. We wanted to request the potential putting shielding on those as well.
The ones on there?
At least on the, on the front side of the building on four sixteen. Yeah, he has, he has the amber on all the driveways, which is what Phil was looking for. So, the plan that we got last Monday did have, did say it was amber on all the driveways, but it wasn't too bad all the way down the driveways.
You picked it up? Any changes?
That's been off there.
Okay, so... So the shielding on the lights on the building and lowering the, lowering the levels on the drives?
Yeah, the main truck parking areas are going to be heavily... So with all the white trucks parked up there.
Sure.
You know, and the white building is going to be...
Okay, well, we're okay for the FBI S?
I think that the lighting on the plan matches the text of the FBI S, so...
Anything else on Medline? I think that we did get some correspondence from Chipmunks on that. And they are working with the applicant to resolve, I guess, moving forward if they find something.
Right. We're essentially asking for a couple of informational pieces that the sites that are significant can't be avoided. And some of this own house is, you have to talk to the protocol, you know, as they did. Once that's packaged into the report, and if it's sufficient, they will then enter into the order of resolution.
Sorry. Well, basically, we're asking to have an agreement with Mesmon about exactly what's going to be.
Right. Exactly. And, and so I think the substantive aspect of that is that they really want to see that being placed for...
Two sub-issues. One is the lost site impacts, and that's Mr. Brown a few weeks later. And Mr. Brazio is concentrating on the onsite. And as you know, there were several spots that need a phase three data recovery during construction. And we should probably follow up on some of the protocols for all phase three.
I did clarify the applicant's claims of this turtle lighting that they keep referring to.
Right.
Turtle lighting is very specific wavelength light, it's a very short band on the wavelengths. So what the applicant is using on the driveway is not turtle light per se, it's a wideband amber light. So it's not going to be same as what they keep referring. That's used, I guess, on postal letters, turtles can't see that wavelength.
Yeah, something.
But...
A right direction?
Right, so they, you know, they don't get scared off, like there's people on the beach or whatever. So, Matt said that he refers to any amber colored light as turtle light.
Just generally.
What Phil's using is, like I said, it's a wideband lighting, you know, it's not going to have a swing. I've got a little experiment going at home, I've walked some of it. So, you can see, I mean, you walk out and if the color is yellowish, it's, it's, it's not white, but you can see inside. But it doesn't make a swing, you can see everything, it projects pretty well.
Okay.
If anybody's interested, you can stop by.
Chili?
No, no chili tonight.
How about Friday around six?
I might be sleeping. And then the street lighting at my house is one seven hundred K, it's about the same levels are proposed right now.
Okay.
So you guys can see that.
Thanks for all your help, all your work.
We're supposed to give plans and my office today and O'Shea yesterday.
Yeah.
I just got it today.
Today.
Yeah, I just got it.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's on the agenda for completeness comments on Monday, Monday FBI S. Okay. Anything else on Medline? We go to National Builders LP, Longwall Pay Trucking Corp., one thirty forty. Neely Town Road Warehouse, SUV for the site plan, public hearing will be continued at seven forty on Monday. I know that there's been some, there was a comment letter, I think you had sent in, I'm expecting for it being done on the drainage.
We met on, remember Captain's Engineer and Attorney on Friday went over the comments and they're present.
Okay. So you should probably get them sometime this week?
Well, it's, the soil testing, additional soil testing is actually happening on Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
So what we're going to do is, you know, Monday or Tuesday, hopefully wrap up everything, get it back in. We're hoping to see the landscaping comments.
She's away, I think she's just getting home, Karen is.
Okay.
How can they reach out?
And we did just get a letter from the county Department of Public Works. And basically they said they agree with the location and drainage of the, of the driveway location. And there were like three minor comments, they wanted to see additional information on the plans. But then they also referenced that the traffic comments that Andrew had made, or his company had made, in the latest response letter would address left turn lane. So, we'll be looking at that again.
Okay.
I just took it myself to send a brief memo to Karen. There's a lot of slate over there right up to the surface, and she had recommended digging pits and sometimes connecting the pits with trenches so the trees could move. So I just sent a brief memo that there's a lot of shale.
Are we ready for a memo from Bill on this, like, plan too, still?
Or, or with Matt too?
If I, if I could just ask, I know that Dave's addressing some of the comments that Dave had about the drainage, you know, and we're working towards that. We feel we'll be able to address those comments that are kind of technical in nature and that. But, but I guess my question is about where the board is at as far as secret on the project. We've been working at it for quite a while, and I realize there's still some issues about the drainage and even, even with the traffic, the less traffic comment that rests, you know, for analysis of the left turn lane. But even with that, the county has a wide right away out there. If it turns out that we have to do a left turn lane, you have to do a left turn lane. It's, it's not a, it's not an insurmountable issue. But I guess the question is that, that again, you know, is the board in a position that we could at least provide a secret determination for the project? And it is, it is kind of critical. I'm sure the board members are aware that, you know, the town board's considering this moratorium that would only allow, only allow continued review of projects that had reached certain stages of secret review. One of them is it accepted DEIS for a neg deck? And I know we had talked about this project being in line for a neg deck for a while. And, well, hopefully the board can at least move that part of it forward. Because, you know, there's been a lot of work already put into this project, and I don't know what more would really come to light from a secret perspective.
Our, our concern would be with not threshold. Are reluctant to close a hearing on something that there may be significant plan change. If there is more disturbance for a pond, if you have to encroach some maybe into a federal wetland. Now with the left turn lane, I, I think that we wouldn't want to close a hearing on something and issue a secret determination until we knew this is the plan that's going to get approved. Technical issues are one thing. You know, adding some lighting or going through something that we're adding poles or something, looking at landscaping. Sometimes those aren't, aren't as, they're critical but not as critical as an actual plan change. If you have to change parking or driveway, I agree. I think we want, this has got a, a plan that is going to eventually get approved. That's what we want to be looking at when we close the hearing.
I, I guess I'll just comment for that. I, I don't really see how these issues could arise, that could arise to a major plan change. The drainage, granted when we move some of the parking lots with the tenant, you know, the end use that's going to come in, we have to, we have to do some additional soil testing in those areas.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're fairly confident that that's better not, not result in, you know, further approachment, certainly not to the wavelength area then. Possibly to the, you might go into the woods a little bit more, but even with that, I don't think that's going to end up that way. And the traffic, as I said, if the left turn lane has to come in, the county has the room there.
Alright.
Not, you know, from a secret perspective, I don't see how that makes a lot much of a difference.
Well, Ed, you know, I've been brought into the public hearing process about the traffic out on Neely Town, and I think we would, we would want to vet all of that prior.
There's also the sound stuff we talked about, I think that's been addressed, correspondence, but we had some things that he's, things like that.
Right, the landscaping. And the landscaping could be on.
Certainly that will be on.
I guess the, the drainage, re-analyse of, analysis of the drainage, we didn't know if you're going to add more subsurface which would prevent anything from going closer to the woods or the residences over there, which could have lighter noise impacts. You know, can it, can it all go underground, there's more cost to that. Is there going to be a dramatic change in the drainage that, that's going to yet to be, be seen? If there is, what is the mitigation to that? Does it, does it have, does it drive up any other impacts, you know? Or is it the same as it is now?
Well, yeah, I mean, the testing that's being done on Thursday and Friday will show us that we're in line with what's on the plans. And, you know, hopefully, you know, but, you know, when we get here on Monday, it'll tell us whether or not basins have been increased and...
The testing was half the battle. The other half was the technical issues that we went over. So, those two pieces combined, assuming you get the same testing, you should, you know, certainly. But the wild card was the, the, the technical issues that we raised. What does that do to the basins? Is that, is there going to be more mitigation in going into the woods like you're saying? Of course you want to avoid that, you know? But, and there are other options. There is a bit of land outside of the hundred foot buffer to increase some of these basins. There's some, you know, but it, it's yet to be seen.
Right. What we need to see?
The lighting too, I mean, I got a lot of, I got a letter from the mayor, Ahebra, asking about the lighting presence there. We can't make a neg deck determination without lighting.
The lighting, the lighting plan was, was revised. It was at three thousand...
Like three thousand?
It was at three thousand. Bill had approved that last year. When ADD file came along, there was a plan that was turned in that raised up that level. But we've since revised that back down to the previous three thousand that Bill had approved.
So, I mean, it's a start and, and the lighting issues are... I mean, that's one of those other things that are out there, so. I just don't want to run into any last minute information.
Have an act, being asked to your hat. Okay? Bracken Road Properties, Bracken Twenty warehouses. Public hearings continue at seven fifty on Monday. We did receive Wolf Schmidt's determination. Just got it this morning, can be for everyone. It may be in your packet, but it's clarified one of our concerns. Want to, she turned brought up in the public hearing process to Mr. Ahern from Burke, Neely, Golden and Norton L.D., attorney for the applicant. Mr. Ahern, Collector Streets for Town Montgomery zoning code thirty dash twenty are defined as streets which carry traffic from minor streets to major streets principally from large residential development schools and churches. Section ninety dash forty dash seventy point twenty references Bracken Road only to define front yard for parking on seventeen K, two oh eight and seven forty seven and not Bracken Road, Bracken Road. Section ninety dash forty dash seventy point one zero is for buildings set back on various roads within the town. It is a determination on the Town Montgomery Code Enforcement Officer that Bracken Road is a local road at this time and buildings only require the sixty foot setback, as from Walter Schmidt. The Code Enforcement has weighed in on parking in the front yard. I believe that there's also some work being done on the stormwater.
The resubmital from, let me see. The resubmital we got March second, just the other day, we didn't review. Because when we talked with Dave, one issue was solved and another was not solved.
Okay.
Subsequently, yesterday, we got some, we got some mapping on some other drainage issues around the building. Which appear fine, but we received yesterday, we didn't go through it thoroughly. He also wrote me a note on it. I just didn't get a chance to go through it all the way, but it seems to address some of the other comments that we had.
Drainage comments you had?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're waiting, right now we're waiting for resubmital addressing these comments. I'll look at this, I'll, I'll speak back with Dave and what he sent in yesterday. I'll speak with him and then we can get that resubmital.
And we would have had a resubmital today with this information on it, but we were waiting for the Collector Road issue. And now that that's resolved, and we don't have to relocate any parking, we can finalize our plan to get it into you. I'm hoping to have that in by Friday.
Okay. Alright, anything else anyone? On Bracken Twenty? We're looking to get the drainage? Issue solved?
If I just might, my name's Brett Golden.
Hi, Rick.
How are you doing?
Good.
So again, I had sent in a letter. Would very much like by the planning board meeting, the next planning board meeting, to see the negative declaration. This is a subdivision and a site plan, and therefore subdivisions, actually the determination of significance on secret was to be done before a public hearing. And so it's really not dependent upon the public hearing, which is different, as I said, from site plan, special permits, it's just for subdivisions under state law. And so what we would ask is that we believe that there are no potential significant adverse environmental impacts to this project. And as a result, we would ask that, for given a neg deck, if you wanted to continue the public hearing, continue the public hearing. Again, like I said, it's, in the state law, the secret's supposed to be done even before the public hearing, so they don't have to be linked. And if you want to, if you still need some issues that still want to be addressed, expect the site plan issues that continue to be addressed. But I think that there is really no significant adverse environmental impacts remaining, and that's why we would ask at the next meeting to go ahead and issue a neg deck declaration.
Well, that'd be a first. We normally close a hearing, make sure we have the plan we know we're going to look at, and then issue a neg deck. We've never done it in, that I, since I've been here, since in ten years, almost eleven now. I'm not saying the regulations, I agree, you know, I'm sure you're right, but I, I don't have the option.
And typically it wouldn't make a big difference, right? But obviously because the work's harder in the future. Because it may be that at the end of this process, this project can't look like this because of subsequent zoning changes, coming in six months from here later. So it matters, so, and that's why we really are strong in asking for this to be done, still addressing quite frankly. Although I think it's clear there is no significant adverse environmental impact. If in fact, something were out of the blue to come up, there is a process where you can rescind a negative declaration. So it's not like that's irreversible, that the secret regulations provide for that, provide the standard for when a negative declaration can be rescinded. But it allows for that. But I think that based upon whatever, all the information that is today here, I believe that we're entitled to the negative declaration and it has significant consequences if one isn't done. So, anyway, that's, that's my request, and I would ask the board between now and the planning board meeting to consider it.
Andrew, could you help me out? The changes that might result on this project versus the changes that might result on one thirty four Neely?
I, there's, there's one more change that, that could have an impact on the size of the basin. There is room, there is room on the site. They do have flexibility to accommodate additional mitigation, what, what I'm thinking that might be. There was also, at one time, there was, there was subsurface on this site, and it was removed, and then, so there's, there's other options on how to mitigate for this. I don't see that it will change the layout, the building, the, you know, you make it a little more graded. They're, they're limited by hundred foot buffer, the building that they're proposing, Bracken Road property line, the parking. They're boxed in there, but they have just enough flexibility to increase for additional mitigation if required.
But again, I've run the model, and we know from the T sub C's that you would ask for, there is no impact to the, the drainage structure.
We haven't seen that yet.
I understood, but we'll be submitting that.
We just haven't seen it.
If there was something that required us in order not to have impacts that have underground, then wouldn't have any impacts, then we'd do that.
Is this a result of some new issue that came up about a month ago?
Yes, correct, correct. We, we didn't, we didn't... We, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have two scale watershed maps that we asked for. When we finally got those, we put a scale on them and we, uh, we found a form. We spoke to Dave, it was one of the comments in there, one of the areas was changed, the other was not. So when I, when I, uh, spoke with Dave, I said, one was changed, the other was not. You know, you gotta do that, look at that other area as well. That could cause some modification, uh, it's in the calculations and, uh, but I think the overall impact of it, I think, be a minor increase in the size of the basin or adding subsurface. Not like it's gonna change the basin, the layout, the size, the, um, you know, other secret impacts.
The other issue is, and it's because it's a subdivision, the public hearing also November twelfth. There's been four or five continuations. State law really suggests a hundred and twenty days for a subdivision public hearing and there's still a project. Now they fall just after the March ninth meeting or the thirty, March third. So this is complicated by the subdivision, Mr. Golden is correct. The rest of the S U site plan and secret all would normally flow, but because it's a subdivision, has these special extras.
I think with, with this drainage being different than the other one, and really, we can compare them, but we can't. I, we, we have a lot fewer issues with this than we do with the other project. I don't know how comfortable I am, I get in a neg deck drawn up at this point for Monday. If we do, we're not really even gonna see it until Monday, end of the week or Monday. And it's unfair to us, we don't operate that way. I could see if the drainage worked out and everything was fine, so we know there's not gonna be any changes. Whatever impacts are minor, maybe close a hearing, but other than that, I, how does everybody feel? Do you think we should?
We get that drainage Friday?
Yep.
We got midline Friday, then we got midline Friday, then we got midline Friday. Just saying, you know, the last couple of weeks since Christmas have been a little, weekends have been a little busy.
Yeah, I, I know, and I, I don't, I, it's, it's, I understand there's also relief in the moratorium law for applicants to move on, to, to, to get a, to get, um, to get a waiver, to get exempted. And, you know, these projects have had a lot of work done. My, my take is they, they may have to go through a process, but will we get to weigh in on whether or not they get exempted is the question.
I'm sure you could, I'm not sure you have to, but, right?
I'm, I'm thinking that we may be asked to know exactly from our perspective where these projects are, if they do file an appeal. But then we may definitely know where they stand, although after there is, they are to be caught up in this, we can't review them.
We'll make the assumption the moratorium rule will be adopted in that public hearing, and that's correct, an assumption.
I, I mean, from my perspective, just the engineering, the technical, the site plan layout, um, I don't see there being a dramatic change here.
On Bracken Twenty.
I do not see that comment. I, I, I really do not foresee that comment. With what?
No.
With our last comment and, uh...
I still don't think, be boxed in here. We're gonna get something, the end of the week, that we're gonna have to weigh in on Monday. I don't think it's fair to our consultants or to us. I mean, we're just getting to the end of this drainage stuff now, you know, in the last week. And we're not, now we're finding out that hopefully there isn't anything extraordinary that's gonna change in the plan. So I don't, unless I get outfully here, I don't feel that we're gonna be ready to issue a neg deck on Monday.
Brett, I'm not comfortable setting precedent, even with the pending, so-called moratorium. I, I'm uncomfortable setting precedent.
We're gonna have to take it in the gut, you know it's gonna come to us, we're gonna be done, and that's what's gonna happen on one side or the other.
Yes.
So I think we're just gonna have to, get it up and take it. Sorry, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have anything ready for Monday.
Thank you very much for your good attorney, I appreciate it.
Does that mean we have to agree to an extension based on the timeframe that Rick's just laid out?
Well, look, um, I think our public comment is pretty much withered down. Um, the issue of the front yard parking's been resolved, we've heard about the drainage. Unless there's something earth-shattering Monday, I would think close to doing it.
Oh, the one twenty applied to the public hearing, not to the secret.
Public hearing, that is, sorry.
Just the public.
Just wanted to make sure there.
Bill signed off on it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got, uh, the, uh, the nails going back in the A D's net.
And I kind of hunted through the engineers and I did get a re, a recording in your office. And I would just like to, I'd like to be out of the equation because I don't quite understand what a soil nail is.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a rod that's gonna go into the ground. That'll, uh, it, it's a tieback for the wall.
It'll go into water line.
Right. That was my point.
The, uh, it does, uh, it does encroach into the easement, there's a fifty-foot wide easement, there's a thirty-foot wide easement and a twenty-foot wide easement. Twenty-foot wide easement is the closest to, uh...
You gotta, get a, a sketch, do that.
I have the, like, something. I just have the overall plan.
The twenty-foot wide easement is the closest to eighty-four, and that happens to be where the water sits now. Where the water line is.
Up here. Right, and then there's an access easement. So up here is eighty-four.
So you got, there's a twenty-foot easement on this property line going into the property.
Yeah.
That's where the water line is now. There's a thirty-foot going back the other way and a fifty-foot that encompasses the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Fifty, and inside of that fifty, there's a twenty coming from the property line and a thirty coming from the other side.
Thirty coming from this parking lot.
Correct, from that, from that direction. The wall is back here, the nails are going back seventeen, nineteen feet.
Yeah.
So they'll go into that easement seventeen feet or so, in, into the easement. Six foot below the ground and deeper.
Right, into the twenty-foot easement.
Into the thirty-foot, the thirty-foot is on this side. The twenty-foot's got the water main inside of it presently.
Thirty, thirty minus twenty is ten, so if you're going in seventeen feet.
Correct.
You're going seven, seven feet into the twenty-foot easement.
No, you're going seventeen feet into the thirty-foot easement. You're not going near the twenty footer. May I? So, you got a, you got an easement here on the property line, it's a twenty foot.
And another thirty.
Right there, that's a twenty, and there's a water main inside it.
Yes.
Or for that, you got a thirty footer.
Right.
Let's say that dies right there, that's the thirty-foot easement. The wall is somewhere here.
Outside of the thirty foot, so it's not even close to the water line.
Then they're gonna have the nails go in seventeen feet. They'll penetrate a little more than halfway into the thirty, where there presently is not a water main. But there's an easement there for future. So my question to Mike was, uh, to Mike Aiello was, do you wanna have these barriers to future improvement installed? Once they're in, they're in.
Yes.
And that will take from the fifty-foot easement, from the thirty-foot easement. The, the water line is in the twenty right now, it's not gonna be impacted. We're talking about for the future. How far can you see into the future, what are you gonna need at that time? Do you wanna have this here? Is there another way to do the wall?
What's the thirty-foot easement for?
The thirty-foot, it's very generic in there, it says, any water improvements.
Or other utilities.
So it's...
So we drew it broadly twenty years ago for a reason.
Ingress, egress utilities, eh?
And it wasn't just for one water line that ended up going there. Would, would the town need more space for more utility ever? And my question is, are these nails, I don't know what they're, what they, how deep they are, will they end up going in underneath a pipe? Or never come near a pipe?
I think they go down, they're two and a half feet down.
They're two and a half feet and then they're five feet beyond that. So it's like, they come in and there's space to, you know, twenty feet or something like that. But it's basically a rod that goes into the, into the bank, but you, you place soil on top of it to keep it in place. But, you know, basically, we're gonna have to excavate that whole thing out and then bring it back up to grade.
Basically, you, you, you have, existing grade is where my hand is. Two and a half feet down, you have a nail coming in, all right? Water lines are normally put four to four and a half feet below the grave to, to protect from frost and freezing. So those nails would be in the zone where a water line could go in the future. Or any other utility.
But that's just the top couple nails, there's the...
It goes thirty foot down.
Thirty feet down, so twenty-five of those feet will also have nails. And so it's just the five or six feet that we're talking about. The nails made out of plastic.
They're, they're...
So basically, it's, it's not whole, not, not all the nails. Basically, it's just, they're just anchors back into the ground, so they'll all go into the floor.
No, I understand, there's a reason. The easement says no obstructions whatsoever.
So is there, is there another way to do it?
Or, I think the town board owns this easement, not the planning board.
No, well, yeah.
The town board, the town board could make its own reasoned decision as to whether to agree that this is okay or not.
Well, you'd have to amend the easement then, if you're just putting something in it.
Flesh it out so you can get this off the town board, because we really have no authority.
I think you wanna get Mike's, uh, Mike Aiello's take. I agree with, with what Jay's saying, that maybe there's a zone, that shallower zone where you could foreseeably put any utility.
There's a ridge, right, and easement has a width.
Correct.
Doesn't have a depth?
No.
No, it's infinite.
It go to...
It's infinite.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all of China. You know, just east coast. It doesn't have a depth.
So it doesn't, so it's, that's because...
Yeah, right, but I mean, foreseeably, you know, if you, if you said, you know, eight feet, you know, so, I mean, you know. You don't wanna definitely excavate a long trench deeper than eight feet, it'd be very costly.
So I'm thinking, no, check with your geotechnical guy, but...
Is there another way to do it on the top?
You need nails on the top for eight feet of this wall.
Well, if that's, you know, I want to start here first, and, you know, like you said, we do have to the town board because that's who issued the, or who the easement is in favor of. But I did wanna start here first to make sure everybody was okay with us doing that. Did you see that, man?
Is there any other kind of anchor that you can do?
Right, that's the question.
Well, it's, it's always...
Other than long nails going very far into the...
It's always a matter of cost, certainly, you can do two other ways of providing this wall. But it's a matter of cost and once you start eliminating those soil nails and going, you know, like way deep with pins or something like that, it gets really expensive.
Well, that's my question, you know, can you do from eight or ten feet down with standard anchors and then the upper eight or ten feet with something that doesn't go as far onto the easement that might interfere with the plan?
Yep, should be reviewed by the J T C engineering coordinator, you know, Mike Aiello.
With the town, with the town engineer.
Yeah.
Mike looked at it yesterday, but I don't know what he...
Yep, and I'll be touching bases on some.
Okay, very good.
All right, that's where we'll review on that. And we do have a set of comments on that, we'll get those back as soon as we hear about them.
Okay.
Since we're on FedEx, did you find anything out about that fiber optic leak?
Yeah, we went, I went out there right after our meeting and, uh, had a tour of the site by Steve Lambert, who's their operations manager. And we went out there and we found exactly what you're looking at, and we have those lines on our plan.
Okay.
They're underground communication lines going from the water tank coming down and then going off the site, exactly as they're shown. We do have a minor impact on it, uh, with one of our low retaining walls and that, uh, well, it was phase two previously. But, um, I asked them to take a look at that and make sure that were no impacts. It is a fill situation, so we will be putting, you know, weight on that area, but hopefully there isn't any impact.
Okay, that, that may not show up on a U F P O, you know, on, on mark out type of situation.
And that's what we did was, uh, uh, subsurface utility engineering is what it's called, and we found those with that.
Okay.
So we know exactly where they're at and that'll help with the layout too.
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks.
I was surprised there was no trucks over there whatsoever in the middle of the day. It's all one in the morning.
Okay, um, midnight. Autumn Sky North Brewery Lane. Close to hearing, early, early January.
I just had a couple of comments, Brett, that, uh, it was gonna move the wells away from the Bracken House.
Yeah, and I think...
I need to see if that was done.
I think, I think that got done.
And then, uh...
On the, on the most recent submitted, just...
I was crying about those drainage pipes, I was saying to them that we looked at them.
Okay.
Brian was concerned about the drainage pipes that were back up, could get clogged because it was small sized.
Right, because of the size of it.
Come back around to the same thing.
Yeah, and if there's, there's no impact to anyone else and it would just bypass that go around. The problem was that the pipes didn't have, they had insufficient cover, they were plastic pipes that's like nine inches in diameter.
I saw your name, Mark.
It was shallow, so that's, there was two minor things to be addressed.
Cover on the pipe.
Yeah, and the well, which thing's done, I, I gotta see. I laid a plan, I didn't have it done.
Cause the last, this isn't gonna help me. We, um...
We last commented, uh, January twenty seventh.
Love that.
And then, and then we commented on the polls, so I, I'd like to see if that's a...
I believe everything's been addressed, all the stuff's been addressed.
Yeah.
My mic is addressed, I wish all items have all been addressed. Yeah, we, we got a, um, um... We got a letter from Mike on the thirtieth of January about the polls. And if I probably should review. The, okay, um, did respond to the pipes, well, and to utility polls.
Okay.
Okay, um, in his letter, January thirtieth.
Okay, we'll look at it, see if we can not go over it.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can get, you know, approval on this. We, I think we've addressed everything, Mike and I went over this in detail, we sat down for, we think everything has been done. So I'm hoping we can get on the next meeting and get, get this, get this done. And I know Bonnie had started.
I did start it, um, I've looked at these files.
Okay.
And I will have to try to help them look at these files because I'm just not sure that I have everything. For instance, I don't have to know this stuff, I'm out, I've got circulated and coordinated with you. So I just need pieces of information to finish it up. I started this, um, probably seventy percent there.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I have it all right.
Okay.
And I've been working with Mike and asking Andrew just whether certain studies were done, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I think, well, we had closed the hearing two months ago, and really, we're reaching in here for a decision, right?
Yeah, it would be subject to my approval of three different documents that Mr. Mahal's, his attorney, Paul says, received templates of, and not to that, common driveway agreement, M S forest roll order. And here, there's actually a separate drainage easement to the town Montgomery.
That's right.
So three different docs, they can be conditioned of, but obviously, you can't sign plaque.
There was, uh, drainage that went across the road, that's where we were working, that's what's happening right here.
So, I mean, um, what, and did you circulate to everybody or just Richard and I?
Initially, Richard and you, because, no, actually, I haven't circulated it yet because I wanted more information to get to you. Is there really, I'm so good with it.
Right.
That one's pretty much done, but I have this information to address.
All right, um, I mean, this one, you know, everything's been addressed, I, there's not much with this. It's about how everybody feels.
Brett, but, but just for a second, this is Chelsea, I just want, just wanted to say, there was a... For a second, this one, just wanted to say, there was eleven engineering reviews on this, so you know.
Okay.
That's more than the norm, just so you know.
Yeah. All right, so I, I think it's been well reviewed. So let's, I mean, if you get something for the other board, something we can consider Monday?
Yeah, my comment for addresses.
Yeah. All right. Okay, um, Autumn Sky two oh eight. We got... We had gotten plans early last month, and we need to send this to the county. That's something we could just decide here to do, making things pretty good.
I think so, yeah, yeah. We have, we got a comment letter out, there's, there's approximately fifteen comments. One of the things I noticed was, uh, parking signs was substandard, and I didn't know if he was looking for, um, relief on the size of the parking. And of course, if the parking size, well, the stalls are substandard size, that's gonna bump down everything. So, and it, it's kind of pinch the size, you know, with the, what...
With everything, yeah, you need so many spaces and they're undersized.
So I mean, I think if you're going, I think they're eighteen foot long.
Okay.
If you're going two, 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 and two, you know, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, it adds up going across the side.
Right, oh, yeah.
I think it's, I, I don't think it's gonna change, but it's gonna change there unless they ask for relief. And I don't know how you get relief from the size of the parking, so unless, well, I do, have it on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it's doable, but it's small.
Okay, so your, your review letter has been sent?
Correct.
Okay. So the park, the park and the size of the park and the size of the...
Yeah, the size of each stall, yeah.
What, what should it be?
Ten by twenty?
Ten by twenty.
Yeah, they're big.
What is he, uh...
Nine by eighteen, I believe.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's common in other municipalities. It was not common on the plan for jury, you know, so it changed between more jury and this, so that's, that's why we clawed.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was a relief or not.
I, I was not even aware of that.
Okay.
He hasn't asked for it.
Correct.
So, I mean, I...
I think selfish with the length of the width, wasn't it?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, because that's, that's the Big Bang for the bucket up there, yeah.
Did you change the code? Did you, uh, make it, no, it's always been that way, always been ten by twenty? All right, but that can go to the county, I think so. All right, so that, we'll send that to the county. Um, K C E, New York eleven and K C E, New York two.
I'm, uh, I'm confused on this one.
Okay.
I was looking at it, I got a D four from the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm recording for you in forty-five days, but I still think they need some respect.
They do for the, for the transmission line, please.
Chairman, could I just provide an update?
Sure.
Sure, come on up.
Hi, Clark, attorney for the applicant, K C two and K C eleven. Just a quick recap of where we are with our application, where we've been, so, you know, we have two, two facilities, K C N Y eleven, K C N Y two. We're here for site plan, special use permit approval. We received a NAGDAC October twenty-eighth. After we received NAGDAC, we did come to the December workshop meeting and we discussed, you know, what was still needed for final approvals. Asked for conditional approvals, just because we have two different timelines. At that meeting, we discussed that, you know, our plans really, even though they showed both facilities separately, that really, we needed two sets of plans. So what we submitted end of January was a set, set plan for phase one, which is N Y eleven, and a set plan for phase two, which is N Y two. And I just wanna have Aaron Curtin give a update on where we are with D E C and D O T, which were the two outstanding permits for eleven, and he'll speak to that.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
I think we only gave you a NAGDAC on eleven because, so you could go ahead and get the D E C wetland permit. And then he told you you had to do everything at once. Was it all, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and a NAGDAC specifically says that we have two, two phases, I think we should...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think the discussion was that, you know, to your point, there was a, it was brought up, oh, you just needed a NAGDAC to get into the queue for New York two, so New York two's going through NISO, just to, in terms of getting the queue for that permitting process, outside permitting process. And then it was brought up that, you know, prior to final approval, you guys really wanted to see the D E C and D O T permit actually issued, to make sure there's no site plan changes. So with eleven, we're able to do that, because eleven, we're moving forward with construction, you know, as soon as possible. Whereas two, because two has this outside approval with NISO, you know, we're not able to submit everything for that. So, you know, we can also talk again about that issue in the sense that we have our NAGDAC, public hearings closed, you know, we're working with you. We should be in position for final approval for eleven, but I think we still need to address that two, you know, two, I would still seek for conditional to provide those permits when we have them, and if there is a site plan change, to come back because of that timeline. But I'll have Aaron give an update on D E C and D O T for eleven, yeah.
Yeah, so for New York eleven, we submitted our D E C wetland permit application back in November of last year. That application was being completed February twenty-first of this year. At that point, we posted our notice of complete application in the Waukesha Valley Times on the twenty-sixth, last Wednesday. And so our D E C permit is going to be, the, the public comment period will be closed March twelfth. So we do anticipate that permit coming kind of March thirteenth, sixteenth time. For the D O T, they are currently reviewing our stage two permit application, we are responding to their comments and pursuing them.
And just an update, there's been no changes to the improvements as shown on our site plan. So at this point, you know, if there's no comments on the public comment on the wetland, you know, that's, that permit will be issued with no, no changes to that site plan. And D O T has not moved or...
Yeah, similarly, D O T, no changes to any of the driveways or any of the approved facilities. We do anticipate that, uh, leaving March sixteenth to have the stage two approval.
Okay.
Basically stated that you need D E C permit, so we anticipate the D E C permit five to sixteenth, and then the D O T should follow immediately thereafter. Yeah, once D E C's provided, D O T, then D O T follows.
Okay.
Is that for both sites or just, you're talking about two now?
Yeah, so D...
We're anticipating...
D E C is just New York eleven.
Okay.
D O T, we've received stage one approval for both of them.
Okay.
If they require the D E C approval, then it will just be for New York eleven. If we can get through stage two without D E C approval, and it's just stage three that's held up by the D E C approval, then it will be both two and eleven, completing stage two.
So right now, you only need D E C approval for stage one.
Correct.
Once you get that, D O T's already approved the concept, right?
Correct.
You get the permit once they, once D E C's done.
And we anticipate that to come on March sixteenth.
This is basically just an approval resolution, I believe, by the board to grant approval on this project.
True.
True approval. Right, but this is...
So Mr. Jackson, are you doing ones?
You're doing geotech, geotech nonsense, yeah.
Okay.
So is it one approval or two approvals, because I heard one final approval for eleven, and one final approval for two. Are we looking for one or two approvals?
So we're looking for final approval on eleven and conditional approval on two, subject to obtaining those permits. And if any changes are made to two, any site plan changes are made to two, stating that we must come back to the planning board, which I think it was brought up, oh, you know, we want to make sure there are no changes, so you don't have to come back. We're submitting ourselves to come back for two based on that timeline, just because we, we can't submit that.
They're separate, distinct, two apps, two decisions.
Correct, yeah.
Too much should have more to help.
Oh, we're not, we've asked, I'm the second, no.
The third, yeah?
Second.
You'll have your permits in place.
Oh, it's, it's been moved, I'm not...
Second of the last Monday, so March, it's five Mondays.
Oh, second of the month, yeah. Okay.
Thirty.
I mean, I, I think that makes a bit more play about, you know, you'll have your paperwork in order, so we have it on the... Sound good, everybody? I think it makes sense.
This came in as a public...
Correct.
All...
Correct.
Everybody?
Chairman, just a, no, a quick update. So a lot of discussion at December meeting was whether or not we could clear trees, and the big push was because of that end of March deadline. And so just wanted to update the planning board, so there's no surprises. Once we have our wetland permit, we are going to cut the trees, so... Yeah, and I know, I know it's been said, I just wanted to make sure if you guys drove by the site and saw that, yep. Yep. All right?
All right.
Rich, if you have any questions or anything, we'll work together on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just got plans on McDonald on the twenty-first of February. So, and I think Andrew got reviews, I don't, I think there were a few things on McDonald.
Andrew, thank you. Twenty-six, we have nothing additional, right?
Okay.
That was our last panel, yeah.
Um...
I was just going through the subdivision regulations and seeing what was and what isn't done.
And Ross got those reviews.
Yes, he said he had things to answer about today.
Yeah, he did. Ross said he had to resubmit, that there were things that he had to work on for McDonald.
What happened with the safety?
We signed them up for that.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're running through the...
Yeah.
It, it is a tough turn.
Yeah.
Um, and the, uh, where it is. It needs to be cleaned up. We can't go that fast around right now.
Try to minimize it.
Um, had it, had it been half, had it been half the number of reviews, Mr. McDonald's still would have been upset.
Okay. It, it was where the driveway must be, that, that's what drove it.
When you have them in there?
Whenever you want to schedule McDonald for a public hearing, if by chance the thirty, if we have all of that, we will.
I, I think with Ross having to do a resubmit, I think we'll wait until April.
I have to send it to the county.
You've got to go to the county, because he had, right?
Five hundred feet? March, still, still in the corner, something out there. You didn't raise a chair, so...
Larry's here for organic produce, right, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, there was a, a request for something on Lake Osiris Road.
Yes.
And it's a, a house across from the farm.
Right.
And they want to renovate the garage, make a little parking area and have a, a farm stand.
They would like to put a, last year, they operated with a temporary farm stand along Lake Osiris.
Yeah.
So they, what they would like to do is make a semi-permanent farm stand in the existing garage. They're leasing the garage from the landowner.
Is it the cement block building, Larry, that they're talking about?
I don't think so, I think it's a steel building.
It's steel?
I think so.
Was it Clayton Cottage, this old house?
It's directly across the street from their end, from...
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, right.
I don't know exactly, I haven't been there, so I can't speed through.
There's a pile of light over there now, that's all.
It's, it's, it's oriented where the gable is not, is not facing the road.
Okay, so it's not the building that I was...
It's a form of cottage.
Colors of... Yeah?
I think so.
Yeah, it's like a chrome, it's like a chrome tint.
How far from the driveway?
Yeah, across the road.
From Swartman. I think it's almost right across the street.
Okay, okay, because I'm a little confused, that's just...
It's the building, it's almost directly across the street.
There's a whole bunch of houses on that, here and so...
I've got an overview here in a packet to show where it is.
Basically, across from the farm, and there's that, there's that block building, John, just from the third to the...
Yeah.
It's this one, it's the newer garage next to the old prime house.
It's cottage.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think the issue here, and Larry, you've probably seen the code, product, farm stands for products produced substantially on the premises. That's the problem. Last year, they were fine, they're right on the edge of one hundred and forty-eight. They were jumping across the street on a one or two or three acre lot. And it may not make sense, but it's what the law says. And by the way, that was, the idea here was to avoid having retail pop up in residential. It was more than just the farmer selling his, his organs.
Right.
And of course, it is over, so, so I don't know, does EPA has to get involved here? I mean, I read the section, do you need the site, you probably have it, want it? You don't want it?
I have it.
No.
No, I, 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 that was my concern when I was reading through the code as well, was the substantially on the premises section of that.
One thirty, forty, thirty point thirty-nine, but actually, that's for this, it's actually a special use permit as an accessory use. We don't see that very often. And sixty, ten, F A is, is the accessory use label, and that one seems to indicate it's gotta be, everything's gotta be produced on the premises. Thirty point thirty-nine throws in the word substantial. And we had this on Hop Blossom.
Yes. Well, and really Angry Orchard.
And Angry Orchard.
We never got to see that. That just happened.
Yeah. And actually, a little used provision until about ten years ago, when these things started to become...
Yeah. I think at Orbit Estates too. They wanted, they, they looked into, on the, on the conservation area, on the Orbit Post.
Yes.
I think so. They looked into that, only went so far.
Yes.
No? Yeah, down on the corner.
Yeah, down the corner.
And he says, leap up to his home farm.
And the definition says building on a farm.
Yeah. Yeah, it was definitely tied to the farm itself.
Right.
Kind of with my team, it built up. I wonder if that piece across the road to the, in the... I wonder if that piece across the road to the, in the ag district, probably isn't, it would be another factor. If you're in an ag district, state or New York ag markets looks very user friendly on all this stuff. If you're not in the ag district, it leaves that protection sense. It gets confusing, properties can get the act exemption and not be in the ag district because they need the income requirements. Or they can be in the ag district and not be producing at the time and not get the exemption. So, it's important, other than that. The county has two certified ag districts in Orange. Where in number one, halfway down the county and all the way south is number two. And most county legislature sets the boundaries every seven years, but they can amend them annually at formal request.
And that's where Hoplasm is doing.
Yes, and that's where we found out the Neely Town corridor, still some of those properties were never taken out. So, there's some lag time on this.
It's not. No, it's, that whole, the whole, all the properties on the north side in the area of Swartling are not. Everything on the south side is, but not.
Now, I think if you apply here, you can go right to the CBA.
So, we make an application?
To the planning board.
Do we have to appear? Or what's up there? Sure.
I think if you apply here, then you don't have to be denied or referred to the extent you agree that you need it.
Okay. So, would that be, just out of curiosity, that would be used by any?
Great question. By the way, you could also ask Wal for a determination, and if you then go to the label out applying, you're looking to say.
If he makes a determination that a variance is not required, we would just return back here.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
You said, I think he said you needed SCU. I think he did a letter.
He did.
Yeah.
So, an SCU.
That's what he said.
Did he find out whether I, this is going?
I just know he did a letter stating sending it here, remember?
Well, if you look, if you look at the column, it says SC under the RA two, five point five, I'm sorry, this says. So, if you just look at the table of use, you think, okay, you need that SCU. But if you look into the titles of what I cite, clearly, that'd be from products produced on the premises.
Which is interesting, because that's not really an area variance, but it's a use allowed to be a zoning district.
Yeah, now it's.
So, what is it? Yeah, I think that was Wal's.
Where it's at.
It is out of the district, looking at the Orange County file, the KMC file, is, comes up in Google Earth and it says it's out on that side of the street.
All right, I'm just seeing this now, but it appears that you may have missed that distinction, we just made it out on or off the premises. Because he's basically saying SCU is required, which we know, under the accessory use section, which we know.
Right.
You know, and the planning board has to approve it. He doesn't say on premises or law.
So, we'll ask Wal for a clarification on that.
Sounds important.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the things could get out of hand in the residential zones in a hurry. Basically, and if you want to sell farm products retail, you can't just buy them wholesale somewhere else. You can't sell them retail out of your residential subdivision house.
It's same with the premise.
It's commercial use.
Yeah. Product's not grown on the property.
Therefore, it's a retail legacy store, again, there's not a great comparison.
Because there's no, is no other use, it's just the garage, it's on the property?
No.
That was her house. Um, I thought maybe the ownership might be close to the ownership of the farm, that piece across the street.
It's, they're not the same, they're not the same owner.
Same building, different row, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Consider whether they might want to merge that with the home farm. By covenant, jumping across Osiris. Now, you have one hundred and forty acres. So, I'm just.
All right. So, we'll ask Wal for a determination and then go to the, what's the, a clarification on that aspect of the zoning code. And then, from there, you'll make an application. Well, if he determines that we need a variance, then we just go to the CBA.
Please make, show me the distinction in the titles.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to him.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Okay, introductory, local law one of twenty twenty, rezone portion of five twenty dash one, dash sixty five twenty two and twenty dash one dash one oh one point two 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 from OP to B four. The town board's having a public hearing scheduled March fifth. Jay, if you would take over this, my cousin Derek is, I think, actually presented in front of the board for this rezon, because he's a president of the bank. So, I'm going to stay away from this one, if you don't mind, appreciate it.
Okay, so, I'll let you talk, Rich, you, you're the one that wrote the note over that.
First of all, I noted that the petition in secret document came in in the spring of twenty nineteen. And just was sent to the planning board, what, ten days ago? And it's unfortunate, because we don't have another meeting before the fifth of March. So, to the extent you want to make comments on any of these three laws, well, yeah. Well, on this one and the next one we're going to talk about. If you want, you don't have to comment on any zone law, the town board has to say you do. And usually, this board does comment, and hopefully, those comments are helpful. But this is a significant amount of area, and it's compounded by, I believe, there's a defect in the notice. If the intent is to rezone over forty acres, the entire bank parcel would be included, not just a portion of it. And even on our own agenda here, it says portion of lot sixty five two point two two. And Sue got that, because the hearing notice says a portion of. In fact, it further says a point two eight four acre portion of, which is not much. That parcel's actually thirty seven acres, plus the former Chamber of Commerce piece, another seven point three acres. Put it all together, you're over forty acres currently OP Office Park. And the reason for that was to not develop commercially at Scott's Corners, like former Exit Five has developed, at two oh eight eight four. That was the idea. The OP is more restrictive than the B four. It seems to me that the bank may have a user in mind. And it might be that the use might fit. By the way, if anyone's ever been at the top of that hill, it's one of the most spectacular views in the town of Montgomery. And it might be well suited for certain kinds of commercial venues. In my opinion, going from OP to B four may be going way farther than needed to accommodate whatever the desire is, which we don't know. At least planners don't know. Because B four is, here we go, gas station, fast food, repair, variances, you name it, there it is. And is that what the town wants for this thirty, I'm sorry, forty two plus minus acre parcel?
You could have a whole nother Hawkins Drive up.
And, you know, as we all know, once the zoning allows it, it's difficult, if not, well, I won't say impossible, but very difficult for the planners to react to community. Opposition, the book says here, it's allowed. So, I think it's important, it's sizable, it's a big piece of ground in the heart of the town. And one would think maybe the comp plan people might want to take a look at this. On the other hand, the OP maybe could be tweaked if the use was some kind of. By the way, the OP allows motels and hotels, the OP currently, which is interesting. And I don't know what, usually, these zone changes are driven by desire. And my fear is that the desire could be laudable, and everyone around the table could think it's fine. But you jump to B four when maybe you didn't have to go that far. And that's my point. And so, I don't know if the town board will have to renotice this. If I'm correct, I think the notice will have to be redone. And if you look at the public hearing notice, it's clearly the entire seven point three acre parcel, which is now referred to as the Girl Spout. But I think the driving force here is the savings bank. It is thirty seven acres of big land. Last thing, and some of you may remember, and I said it was ten years ago, it was actually more of it. The two acres at the corner of seventeen pay and two oh eight. Southeast corner. Was zoned from OP to B four, just the two acres. This board had an issue with C stores, gas stations dumping right out to the Scott's Corners light. And did something unusual, made the savings bank agree to certain restrictive covenants. Which basically took out of the B four some of those heavier traffic uses. I saw that they came back to the town board later on to seek to modify those covenants. I don't know if that ever happened, but the point being, you love that the, this board went ahead with the B four for just the corner, just two acres, with a lot of strengths. And now here you have forty two acres next to you. So, that's enough, I think you now have background.
So, I'm not really clear, are they talking about rezoning seven, some acres or whole forty acres?
I appreciate why it's confusing, because again, the notice says the whole seven point three acre, I'll call it the Girl Spout piece, used to be the chamber.
Right.
But then it says the point two eight four acre portion of the big bank piece. But the petition is the whole thirty seven acre bank piece plus the seven acres of those.
Going down to two oh eight, a mile through. Going down to two oh eight, a mile through.
And you know what the point two eight four acre piece was, little piece the bank picked up when the old two oh eight was changed?
Yes.
Remember, it used to be half moon?
Yeah, yeah.
And the description for the bank's deed is their big description, and then a second parcel, point two eight four. And unfortunately, only that second parcel was called. So, actually, I think there'll be some time on this, when I'm speculating. I can't imagine the town board only intends to rezone point two eight four acres, which is down by that old half moon.
Right.
Because that would not include the top of the hill and the rest of their homes. So, don't know what you, sorry, keep going there, don't know what you want to.
They don't have to tell us at all, or give us any indication of what they want rezoned.
No, and the town board may not know. I don't, I don't forget, this, this, this paperwork sat around since May. And maybe it's the new administration stumbled across and said, hey, you've got to process this. Again, speculating. It sounded like the bank was in a terrible hurry, if from May to now, it's just been addressed. So, my question is, maybe you just want to ask the town board for a little more time, unless you know what you want to say now, then just say.
More time than forty eight hours, I would think.
I would, yes, yes.
I mean, just call me that, but it's sat around for ten months.
Perhaps we could just ask that question, are you intending to, change the zoning, not just a small piece or all, what you could want?
Yeah, I, I think we should ask, but I think I know the answer. Again, the petition was filed, certified, signed by the landowners, clearly, the forty two plus minus, no doubt about it.
So, I, I think we're all in agreement that.
I can provide some clarification, my office was involved in the, in preparation of plans on that. The, it's the entire parcel, it's the entire World of Savings Bank parcel, as well as the, as well as the Girl Scouts parcel. The, the notice, the language of the notice states exactly as Rich said. But there's also an attached description to it, which includes all parcels, so it's that. I, I, the town board is aware of the discrepancy, and they're assessing.
Assessing?
They're assessing whether or not they have to renotice. I, I don't know what, I think Will Frank is in, in on that. I, I have not heard whether or not Will has made a determination of whether or not a notice, a renotice would need to be made, but they are aware of the discrepancy in acres.
The notice was very specific in its error, as opposed to just C Schedule A, which would have been the whole door in two acres. So, okay, it's out of our hands, but again, this is a regular meeting of the board, if you want to take a vote to either send a letter asking for time or pointing out your concerns. Probably, I think what's important, get something in front of the town board tomorrow night.
Maybe suggest something like changing the zoning to B four, to open it up to more parcels with heavy commercial use.
The OP could be tweaked.
Right.
And be another option.
Well, it seems that this has been sitting for ten months, and we're going to have a revision of the comp plan anyway. But that's the venue that they are looking at, that, that intersection. And whether they want to tweak the OP or make it OP four, or. Unless, unless there's something coming from the town board, if we're going to, let's push this through real quick, I don't.
You know, we don't know that, perhaps we could, we could just say in there, you know, that we would think it preferable to wait for the comp plan and have a chance to look at.
There's also a secret process to have the company, the zone change, so not the type of action.
Yeah, and they did a long EAF again last April, I think.
Yeah. But real evaluation of the EAF.
And I don't know if there was any notice of intent, certainly, usually on a zone change, there aren't other, other living populations.
I would suggest that we'll be asked to expedite a lot of projects by applicants, I don't why we put ourselves in a position to force them something else, right? I mean, pumping the brakes and waiting for the comp plan or what have you.
Right.
You know, Jay, I would, I would certainly suggest a motion to that, at least.
Well, I understand, the, the board recommends that the, that the, this, this parcel, this whole proposal be addressed in the comp plan.
Change the zone.
Or tweak it.
Do you want to indicate any reservations about going all to B four?
Yeah, I think what you said, Rich, sums it up, you know, we, you essentially have lost control of what you want there, we want to understand, right?
Question. You have the smallest of site plan on a state highway that goes to county. This might be for you. You have a zone change on one of the most spectacular parcels in the town at a major intersection.
That's called county plan? It does.
It does.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, that maybe they would weigh in and say this might have impacts beyond just this, just the property lines, it would seem. I just wanted clarification.
Hopefully, the process will go that long before the comp, and then the comp committee has a chance to look at the zone change.
Well, easy way out is, is a preboard, all you did was do the process, right? You know, if you get our recent renotices anyway, we'll talk to you in the next one.
But we're making an assumption that Mr. Frank will decide it needs to be renoticed as opposed to he decides it's fine. And tomorrow night, the town board opens a hearing, closes a hearing, and assuming that they revert to counter. We don't know that. We don't, so that's insane to not assume that's a procedural event.
Well, uh, the town board appreciates your referral to us. We only had one meeting to discuss this, and how many we have more questions or answers. Requested you sent the theory for another parcel, we can have a chance to really assess potentially impacting this change.
Jay, I think we should add that we got it in there so that they can see what we're seeing, so that they know.
I really would like to express our concerns about changing the whole parcel to B four. The extent of the changes that we're gonna disengage.
That may need to be stated in one sentence. That's your song, without going in, we don't have any further details.
So it sounds like it's a combination of first, four things that this might be more appropriately addressed at the comprehensive plan stage. But if it's going to be pursued, um, outside of that process, then you need more information because you were only given a day or so to even consider what is being requested. And it was even unclear what that proposed own petition was encompassing. And the only reason you know is because applicants are never having either.
I really would-
Beneficial.
I really would like to put that sentence in about what concerns about.
And the B, and the B four, so it's-
Three.
And the implications.
It's gonna be the memo.
Please.
Okay.
These are mine ears.
Okay, I'll take a stab and then certainly-
Do we need a motion?
Yes, you do.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Rose, to prepare a letter to the town board regarding the three, you know, the three, uh, items. So, um, is that enough of the motion? Okay, hold it, you say aye?
Aye.
Thumbs are fused.
Aye.
B four, so that's-
Just made it.
Thanks, Jay. Thanks, Marty. Okay, introductory local law two, amending section thirty dash twenty zoning code to add definition for used car sales. Again, this hearing is going to be, um, tomorrow evening. Um, I did send a, a note around, I don't know if this goes far enough.
Yeah, it, it kinda does skim across the mountain tops.
Yeah.
It could have a little more detail.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, there, there's, there is still a way for the kind of use we're trying to, that this law is trying to prohibit in somebody that has a repair garage. And doesn't say it, that repair garages are exempted from it, basically. I mean, I, I think it could be cleaner if they-
Is that, is that simply because of their right to do business, or?
Yeah, they, I, I don't have a copy of the actual law. You, the sale of used vehicles, whether or not in conjunction with the sale of new vehicles, but excluding, excluding the sale of salvaged vehicles, vehicles with a salvage title and or vehicles for which title has been transferred to an insurance company in settlement of a claim for damage thereto or thereof. The forego, the foregoing exclusion sell not applied to the sale of used cars when such sales are incidental and subordinate to an automobile repair shop. So it gives the opportunity for a repair garage to argue like, hey, I got eight, ten cars in here that are banged up. I'm using them for parts, or I'm selling them, whatever. I think the idea is, is to eliminate that type.
Let it see.
Sorry. Or you could have a ten acre piece associated with a garage. You could have two hundred and fifty cars here behind a fence. And it's like, well, working on them, and now you're gonna get into-
It sounds like they're kinda aiming this at the salvage lot.
Without a doubt.
Across your selfish.
Yeah, I think, I'm speculating, and this stuff comes in, and you know, came, this one came completely out of the blue. Remember the Stone Castle Insurance Damage Car Auction Yard?
Yeah.
Came in as a vehicle sales lot, and it was approved as such. When BHT came in, the application is now being withdrawn. Same use, and they argued the same, because they had to fit themselves into the zone. I think this law is designed to clarify that those kinds of car lots are not the same as either a new car, new car sales lot or a used car sales lot. And I think what they're trying to do here is distinguish between the operable vehicles you can buy and drive down the road, and the vehicles that have to come in and go out on flatbeds, because they're-
Because they are being sold.
Yeah.
Those salvage vehicles are being sold.
And again, I'm speculating that this, this simple little definition, which doesn't exist now, was designed to do that.
I, I guess it does, but does it go far enough?
And maybe it'd be better to go to the vehicle sales lot use and prohibit inoperable vehicles from being considered that use. Or go further, um, because there are a lot of folks from the BHT record that argue that this was actually a junkyard. And, uh, the definition of a junkyard could be further expanded. So there's a bunch of different ways to do it. I see this as maybe an attempt to clean up an issue or-
It does a lot, but I just-
Well, it does, it clears up the first eight yards of it, right? But it doesn't really, you know, you could go to any, any repair shop, and he's got twenty-five, got twenty-five cars that he's using for quote-unquote parts and repairs. Doesn't, it doesn't stop that.
Yeah, once he's, and he can argue that I've worked on them.
Yeah, right.
You know, and it could be the same thing, I, I, you need to have to prove it, and it's, you know, we have enough going on with the building department, we don't need to, you know, it's gotten better, but we don't need to add. Um, and how we would add to the definition to tighten it up? And again, you know, we, we still be working on it two years from now, still. Um, I think we all agree, this is kind of what we'd like to see. We don't wanna see, you know, four thousand cars in the field. People are buying them, but they need a fender.
Right.
And that's what insurance auto auctions is.
Maybe you could suggest the town board be more direct. Because what they're really try, I think, we're speculating, they really are trying to prohibit the BHT.
Sure.
If I can use that as an example. And then maybe why not just write some code revisions to decide if you can sell these kinds of cars anywhere in the town? As opposed to creating a used car sales definition? Just a, just a thought.
So what do you think?
This is off the point, but I noticed that a lot of the used car places that probably sell operable vehicles, they're parking the cars right on the road.
Or some issue, of course.
Seventeen K.
All over two oh eight.
So ask the town board.
First, you might agree with what we think they're trying to do. And this is not like the other one we talked about where there was some issue. It's just hadn't get there in the most effective manner.
So ask the question to the town board, is this specifically aimed at oil insurance auctions? Gas auctions?
Or we could make it, under the assumption that this law is designed to, then we suggest they might do it perhaps in several places in the code to drive the point home.
Right. And the assumption that the insurance auto auction type of business is, is what is targeted here. Uh, we suggest that we look at other, other areas in the code where, where we could, um, define it more clearly.
And I don't know if the intent is to completely zone it out of the town or to limit where it can go, because the current vehicle sales lot use, uh, I think's allowed in quite a few of the zones in the town. Obviously, Stone Castle, which was I three. Give me a second, I can tell you, um, with other commercial zones, yeah, here. Special exception permit for motor vehicles, mobile home or boat sales, outdoor sales lot for products for sale or for hire, that was the use. Mostly it comes in for vehicles, not a lot of boat things. But we used to have a boat-
Yeah, we just bought-
Company in the town, right? You can see how some of this stuff comes through in the zone. Anyway, special exception use in the B four, the IB interchange business, the ID, basically ninety-nine and, um, some others. And I three, which is Stone Castle, and I four. So that use is currently allowed in five different commercial zones. By the way, including the B four, which is gonna take a while. So, you know, I don't know if maybe there are, if the town board wants to retain the ability to sell these insurance damaged vehicles, maybe they should decide where in the town that should be by zone, because it's pretty wide right now. Uh, or if they wanna completely prohibit it, then, um, maybe this vehicle sales could just have another second saving to it, this will not include inoperable vehicles.
I gotta be organized to help this statement, I beg your pardon.
Not really.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, when I listened to the town board meeting, I realized their definition of not operable, the reason they were hung up on that, I don't know if you have insight, so I pardon you, was their fear that somebody with a broken battery would be considered inoperable, and they would not be able to service it. That's all I cared to share, I'm sorry.
This law is being introduced to prohibit, you know, this is the rich.
The sale of salvaged vehicles?
Why don't we put out there that we're assuming that's what this is designed to do? Because maybe that's, maybe there's more to it.
Sure.
And then we can go on with your thoughts. And I don't know if you feel as a board that they should be prohibitive flat out in town? Or if they should just be cut back on where it could allow.
Were you in on that, or? Well, do you have any statement about insurance auto auction yard in the town?
Well, obviously, it's one that's been operating for years really comfortably. And then there was another one, I was gonna be an absolute nightmare.
Certainly. It's a drainage, and we got plenty of, and there's various, I don't know where to find a spot.
They're not so free. Exactly.
Next little land or has a weather.
There, there is, there probably is not a two hundred acre parcel in the town of Montgomery, or even a hundred and fifty acre parcel, in the town of Montgomery that doesn't have some type of wetland on it. Federal or stream to state. We're, we're, we're running out of all the good, good land. And, and anything that is good, of course, it's visible. Um, it's on, on a county or state highway, it's not on the back road anymore. And the, I, honestly, I wouldn't have a problem, like, we got one. I don't like, I don't think we need any more, to be honest.
They're not the most, uh, heavy tax rate of all that you could think of. There's a lot of structures.
I mean, I'll compose a letter-
Yeah.
Asking them, can you agree with them on, on addressing the issue? And under the assumption that this is being introduced to prohibit, you know, is there any place else in the code that we would like to see that thing you may think could be modified to prohibit issues to the way it is?
We have given there are five or six, if you're certain, I'll try.
Yeah. A motion to, a letter together, Rich? Do we need to?
Yes, I would.
A motion by Jay? I, I'll get something out by tomorrow morning. So everybody can be, we can tweak it, or how they're ready.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
You better do it tonight.
You better do it today.
Yeah, soon.
Um, planning boards'mittles, we've, we've talked about the, um, um, having timeframes on items getting to us before we can act. And, you know, for the, for the most part, you know, that was an aberration at the last workshop. That was because of a legal issue that we had to resolve it. But when it comes to when we get plans and when we put them on, I mean, we never rush. I mean, we may get something, but we don't, it may, the perception may be that we do, but we don't. There's a lot of stuff that comes in, sits around here for a month before we even have it on an agenda. Red Birch has been sitting here for a month. I mean, you know, we solve this stuff, it just takes a long time. And everybody, courteous enough, they know, all the applicants that, you know, are busy. So I think they're, to, to require a specific time to have a submittal in before we can have it on an agenda, um, a lot of this stuff is very minor in scope. You know, they just want an update the board or something. And I, I don't know if we wanna put the pressure on our consultants to get something done. We don't, like I said, we don't get something in that the next day, it's been. Rich had some thoughts on, on drawbacks to requesting, uh, the timeframes. And one that is evident and obvious is that, you know, our consultants now will be pressured to have something done by that time. We say two, two weeks, and, and everybody else, and they may be looking for other information from, from applicants, so.
What's the, um, what's your answer to it?
Yes.
And, and superficial, we need to do that, we need six, we need six Sues to do-
She's the most, the, the most sought after consultant we've had. The most important, we have to doubt.
Absolutely.
And, um, I mean, it's, it's fluid, like, like I said, we, you know, we, she asks if we should have, we have an agenda circulated a week before meeting amongst ourselves, so we can tweak it, or, or an I, consultants. Par, par, patient.
The problem I have is, I think, a neg deck, a majority of them.
Exactly, exactly, that's why.
Some major actions, um, that we are applying.
Right, and one thing about it, a, a neg deck, a lot of, it, it's a summary of our decisions. And the decisions are usually made like this. So, um, I, I read it to make sure that it follows what we talked about. And I don't think we get too specific. I, I don't know if we really wanna tell somebody, well, you gotta have it in two weeks before, or you're not gonna do anything. I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Well, obviously, you need to be flexible in certain cases. But only have to make major decisions or the consultants are in there, just have finished reviewing something that day or the Friday before. You know, most things obviously need to be, right?
Hey, and I, we've been doing that.
Is it two weeks or like a discretion of the board?
It would seem to me that right now, there is some free fall. In theory, an applicant could hit us with paperwork Monday morning of a Monday night meeting.
Which-
Perhaps the board would adopt a policy by resolution- Perhaps the board would adopt a policy by resolution. Generally speaking, your material needs to be in so many days ahead of our meeting. But not firm and fast and because right away you're gonna break your own policy. Because the small mom and pop subdivider, you know. And you see no reason not to move it forward, but boy, it only came in last Friday, so you can't act on it because we have this policy. So that's kind of the problem. But right now you have nothing really. Some towns actually establish a deadline.
Yeah.
Two weeks. If you don't have it in our office, two weeks before the meeting. Forget it. You're not, you're not on the agenda and you're not gonna get a review letter. We'll get to it. Don't forget though that there are some timeframes here under state law. And they don't recognize necessarily the workload we're playing for. And I think I pointed out to you when I memoed this a month ago. Believe it or not, New York state law just talks about everything from the day an application is filed. There's no mention of whether it's complete or not. And we're kind of following DEC's lead. With DEC, you keep getting notice of incompleteness until you're complete. And then the timeframe's run. And I pointed out, and I think you could do a better job, the tail end of your memos always say, this represents our professional opinion, but may not in all cases represent what the board wants.
Hit something that just changes everything.
And I think maybe both of you could put, um, and until these comments are addressed, this application is incomplete. Because it avoids Sue having to send an incompleteness letter to twenty-five pending applicants over and over, by the way. Each time they re-submit. And that'll, that'll protect us on this kind of tough state law that runs everything from the day an application comes in. Whether it's good, bad, or incomplete. In theory, the state law contemplates you'll hold the hearing within sixty-two days of the day an application is filed. Makes no mention of whether it's a good application or it's a lousy application. And so we have to kind of fill that hole. I do think you would benefit from a general policy. So at least some of the applicants will realize, hey, we got this deadline. Step it up. As we all know, a lot of our crowding at the end is because they delayed in submitting. Right? They end up with six weeks and we have six days. And that's, that's what gets everybody's.
Can I throw a couple things in? Sure. If, Rich gave us the bottom of our memos, the language there. Maybe you want to modify it, suggest it to the board, see if the board agrees with it. And, you know, modify that the way he's speaking about, you know, in general, two weeks or if it's not. Or, or maybe without the timeline, but just that application is incomplete until these technical issues are addressed. As, and the same for planning issues as well. That's just a suggestion. I'm on both sides of the table a lot. I'm a lot more on the other side of the table than on this side of the table. And we live and die by submitting on time. Just saying. I don't get away with it in Newburgh, in Windsor. A lot of other places, just to throw it out there, just so you're aware of how other, every, every board operates differently. It's home rule in New York state. Every single board is different.
Keep in mind, this deadline is gonna require a consulting engineer especially to submit a plan to the deadlines. Quality's gonna go downhill. Tell you that right now. Because I've got to get it in by Tuesday. It's gonna be. And what have we seen lately with a lot of plans?
That's why I directly.
Everybody in front of us has had issues that could have been cleared up with a proofread only. Someone else, another set of eyes checking. We start putting deadlines on these people and that's all we're gonna get.
I, I think what's, would be useful and what's real confusing for me in the new week is, and it's part of what's happening is the fact that you have three meetings. So, so you have two regular meetings, then you have a workshop meeting. And what is that deadline related to? Is it just at the beginning of the month for all of the meetings? Is it before any meeting they may appear on the agenda? You know, then you'd have to know what the agendas are in advance. So I think the fact that you have the two meetings. So I, I can tell you in a row, we have a workshop meeting, then we have a meeting where we actually take action.
Okay.
And so they have to, if they're submitting something that needs to be reviewed, it goes on the workshop. The only things that end up on the second meeting is something that's already been incomplete. Public hearing process. You know, and so it's, it's a, it's a complete application. Now, we do, because we are flexible too, because we know there might be just someone who needs a minor approval. We, we have that flexibility. But I think when you're thinking about timeframes, it has to be within the context of the fact that you have two meetings. What kind of, what are their purposes? If they're exactly the same, just two meetings because of the volume of one here. How does that relate then also to submitting at a workshop? And, and I think basically people are just submitting.
That's what's happening.
Yeah, and they're just trying to get on an agenda, whether it's the workshop or one of the two.
I can't, I can't tell you how many times I've heard in where I work, an engineering surveying firm in Lower Orange County. We gotta have it in by Tuesday. Just get it, get it in. And I know that it's gonna get kicked back. And I think it's industry wise.
We're, um, we're operating, of course, that when Sue gets the submittal as she should. And I give the paperwork back, Sue will put on there the date that she needs it back. We, we always try to beat that date, be in front of that date, of course, especially now with moratorium and everybody frantic to try and get the reviews. And so we're trying to, you know, better those dates where we can. But where I don't get it from Sue, and I just get, here's an email, here's an email. FedEx coming from Medline. Here, download, big download from everybody down. Everybody down. Go to my website and download the plans. You know, then I make sure that you know. Hey Sue, I've downloaded, you know.
I think part of our requirement, our time requirement has to be based upon when hard copies are at town hall. Not just an electronic version to someone.
Maybe your consultants are too accessible, especially Andrew. Prior planning boards said everything goes through headquarters. Then it gets circ, then it gets out.
We still do.
But you're still getting stuff directly.
Well, sometimes it's just minor things. Well, you're working with stormwater, so we, like, we had Dave work directly with Andrew.
Right, which makes sense.
It didn't make sense for everybody to get a plan that.
Understood.
Medline was the other side, you know, FDIS plans, you know, stormwater, every report.
So why don't we say seven business days prior, after, we will review after. You can't be on an agenda unless something's at town hall. Hard copies at town hall, seven business days prior to meeting.
And you can't guarantee a thorough review with that seven days.
And we're not guaranteeing a review. You could be on an agenda.
Yeah.
And we can start from there. Disaster.
Then maybe they could describe it to the board, what, what they're looking for, you know.
Usually do that, a new application, like, we try to put it out for a presentation when we get.
You know, in some towns that aren't as busy as we are, once you apply, you're on every agenda. Until you're approved. And that way, it's just, it's a constant. This playing board couldn't possibly. But it shows you how the volume of work constricts how we can do our job.
We, we started a good discussion on it. I think we need to talk about it some more. You know, since you're rushing to, it's all of a sudden bang, now here's the move. You know?
You, you couldn't guarantee it. You gave it to me in seven days. You can't guarantee, I can't guarantee that I could get you a thorough review in seven days. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, good. So we're gonna hold off on anything, anything formal right now. Um, the moratorium law. The one thing I did want, I did want to bring up, and I had it in the earlier memo, and I should have had it in the one that we sent. Your exemptive, less than forty thousand square foot or pre-bays, or less than pre-bays. Something to that effect. But I think it also has to say on, on a tax lot, on a lot. Because it doesn't. And what that leads us to is you could have a large parcel, could have four, five, forty thousand square foot building. Thirty-nine, nine, 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 you want me?
Section five B.
Yeah, five B.
To add on a.
Any proposed warehouses, distribution centers.
Having a maximum gross area of forty thousand square feet and no more than three truck doors.
And it needs to be per, per lot.
Cumulative per lot.
Cumulative per lot. So we don't have five forty thousand square foot.
Good point.
Not Monday, though, right? Do you have time on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I just. One, one you have to, I have a few problems. Go ahead.
Um, just quickly, the, the notice said it's March eighteenth, which is a Wednesday. Is that what the town board did? They put the special month to have.
Special time, too.
So it is Wednesday, the eighteenth, as opposed to Thursday, the nineteenth? Yes, I see a lot of heads going up.
That's because one of the board members was out of town.
I didn't.
So it is the eighteenth.
So in particular with that section five A. It says, any warehouse or distribution center project that has received a negative declaration. And then it's set parentheses, it says, notice of determination of non-significance. Now, negative declaration is not a notice of non-significance or an unlisted action.
No, that's actually, it's another, they both mean about the same thing. So I don't, I think the drafter was just clarifying that neg deck also means determination of non-significance. Which is what a neg deck does.
Well, when we do an unlisted action and then, is that the same as a type one? Where we declare a negative action, a negative declaration?
Right, and you're doing a determination of non-significance, whether it's unlisted or type one. What gets people confused is this DEIS. There's only one project that that language applies to, and that's Medline. No one else in the shoot that's been pos decked and is going through that process. And the easier way of saying is everyone else but Medline is a negative declaration. We heard it today twice, one thirty-four and rec.
Yeah, we usually, you know, do seeker and come up with a more expectation.
Which is also a notice of non-significance.
But that's not really the same thing when an application comes in.
No, it is. A two lot subdivision, neg deck, has the same effect as a neg deck on one thirty-four here. Doesn't matter if it's unlisted or type one, they're all treated the same. This is pos deck, DEIS, FDIS. That's really the only difference in, like I said before, the order of production.
Anything else on the moratorium?
On section four, A two. I was wondering whether, other than just building our distribution centers. You wanted to speak about expansions of parking lots if they increased, you know, the volume of traffic that we approved in the original application.
At least their interest is just in warehouses and distribution.
Okay. So if that increases business, the number of vehicles and the number of employees, that's a good point. Okay.
All right. Monday, the people, uh, circulated memo to add that about the one per lot cumulatively. Um, and last this morning is Jeslyn Orange LLC, Bridge Road. How are you?
Good.
Good. Update us?
Sure.
Just play on the table.
I have two sets, so we're gonna follow along.
I'm sorry.
It's north of a big bridge.
This is where you're gonna have the, the building.
And I just want to point out to everybody, this is not a warehouse distribution. So essentially, this is the side we're running at originally.
Yeah.
During that time, Ira, who's the owner, by the way, I'm Mike Bowden, Ira Confront. This side was just too expensive. So you were gonna purchase this side. During that time, this side became a bell. So he's purchased the entire track.
Okay.
So his business, which was gonna be on this side, is now on this side.
Oh, so you're just going the other side.
Because we've done all this work over here. We want to have this as like, you know, for sale, for lease, for, you know. For rent, whatever. So these would be very similar to the Felizy project, smaller buildings. Just, you know, contractor maintenance, and this is just a larger one.
Okay.
Um, and then this is for his business, which is a hydro exclamation business. So that's it, I guess. Question for the board, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer them, is not sure where we got the secret. We went to one meeting. I don't know if we were even circulated for secret. So we have that. We have the application, which is now more. So I think we have to revise our application.
This has got more building.
Yes, correct. Even if we'd added those, that would be a revised application.
Start right from the beginning on this.
So re, re-circulate.
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Do you need two applications or two applications?
Well, it's all one lot, though. This is a project consisting of just four buildings.
Is it two tax lots or one tax?
No, it's one tax lot. It would have been, we would have subdivided if we only stuck with this side. But now, since it's a contiguous piece of land, we're, it's just.
So now it's a two lot subdivision?
No, it's one lot. We're not gonna subdivide.
One, one owner.
In the future, if someone wanted to buy this, they would have to subdivide this.
Well, we reckon, we recognize that a highway creates a natural subdivision. I don't know why, I mean, I'm telling you what to do, but it would seem like you want the flexibility to be able to sell one and keep the other.
We could certainly keep the subdivision on the table. I mean, it's, it's a very easy subdivision because we're not changing any lot lines. It's really just saying this is one tax lot.
Logical. If you do the accessory.
Would you want to dedicate twenty-five minutes to that?
I would like to not have you just do it by accessories since they're in front of us. Why, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, isn't it? No lines are gonna change. It's not, as he notes, maybe we'll ask you.
Some dedication.
A rule by use. It probably is a rule by, be your property line, go to the.
Yeah, I mean, according to our surveyor, who actually does a very good research on things like this. I mean, there is some kind of right of wear. I don't know if it's exactly fifty feet. I'll have to measure that. But they're, it, it, they do not go into the road. They're, they're setback behind those stone walls that run along the side of the road. Yeah, that's existing. That's surveyed, that's verified. Yeah, those are not proposed. Those are just there. This is a, another house.
Well, that's a separate lot.
Yeah, that is a separate lot. It's a separate owner. Uh, yeah, this is, this is just.
Do you know that guy? I mean, you're gonna put a big building behind him. Is this cool with him?
I've never met him, to be honest with you.
You probably will.
Yeah, certainly will. I mean, we are screening. We'll provide as much screening as possible. This is also a, I believe, a seventy-five foot setback. We're even pushing the building further back to that. We'll have screening right on that. We're not gonna disturb anything in there.
Right.
So we're gonna try to keep as much natural vegetation between us and our responsible.
Quarrels.
Quarrels.
Donnie Quarles, yeah. He spent, he was here, he was here, that one, he was here.
I'm assuming, so. If you look at this. This is an old farm road, which is probably for this, this is probably the original farmhouse. There was another small homestead, I think right around us down here, right here. So I don't know if this was connected to that, but then you have this old farmhouse here. But I believe that this was the original farmhouse, which this stone wall was all the way down probably to the, you know. the way down, probably to the, you know, is my best.
It's interesting, if this side lot, side lot, rear lot, front, what's this?
Right, yeah. Well, they must have, they must have just subdivided this piece off and then just left out.
How they choose the setback.
Oh, you're saying this could be, this could be front?
To go around this property, you know, these sides.
We could certainly make that front.
Pretty sure.
Yeah.
Right.
And now to not clear any concerns. I mean, I'm really cognizant of, of screening everybody out there, I just, I have a, there one from a solar farm in the rear of my house. So I'm, I know how upsetting it can be, so I want to keep it pretty much natural. You know, from the road, you know, a stone wall going in, and then the entry, we can shove the building back a little bit, and keep it, keep it up for it along the outside. This, we were never going to touch anyway down the back, but it's really old farm fields that are kind of grown up now.
To keep trees there, and just throwing the prices...
Yeah. Yeah, we do have to remove some of these internal stone walls, but they're going to be repurposed and reset.
Okay.
He's, he's a master at resetting stone walls, so.
All right, great.
I can leave a set here for you, if you want to work here.
You can leave it here, yeah, and then you'll make a submittal, and then we'll get on an agenda.
So it looks like, I just want to ask a question about this moratorium. If I understand it correctly, it's, it's forty thousand square foot or higher. The only thing that struck me was the three bay doors, because we have more than three bay doors on these larger buildings. But we're not distribution, we're not coming in and coming out all day long. Just come in in the morning, then go out in the morning, then come back.
You're just loading in, you're not, you're not warehouse distribution. It's going to be contractor. The reason for the three is we have two different kinds of warehouse uses in the town, three and under, or older, that's why they're...
This is, this is a partial set, I didn't give you any structural details, this is basically...
What is the use, though?
The use is for our, for the hydroback business.
No, I'm, I know, how, what section of the zoning are you coming in?
Um, very similar to what we use, you know, contractor. It's basically storage of his equipment, maintenance of his equipment, and home base offices.
You're going to stay away from the word warehouse.
Absolutely, I mean, the building, I will not call it a warehouse building, although it may kind of look like one in the back, because it's, it's going to be a steel structure. But the front, you're going to have all offices in with lots of glasses. But I'm hoping to the tones, you know, whatever colors, you know, that would be viewed.
Yeah, you're right, as you know, it's this industrial background, I thought, because you made it off eighty-four years ago. Because you've got to go through all the residential to get through your site of business. And Felizy went through without as much opposition as I thought, because it was small, modest, and it was well screened. The folks on Ridge were wound up, there was going to be a, a big industrial use here in twenty-five years' time, and then they came out and rose, filled this room.
Yes, yes.
I would say your fleet is only two trucks more than... We have seven trucks, and they go out at seven in the morning, they come back at three, between three and five in the afternoon, to deck. So it's very similar. He has a much larger building, but the use itself...
Seven or five?
Yeah. But we work for the utility companies, so if there's a storm or an emergency, we call out, we go.
You're out.
Yeah, but normally, it's, it's seven to three.
What is your business again?
Hydroback excavating.
Hydroback excavating, okay.
Yeah, we dig around high voltage electric and high pressure gas safely.
So if I remember right, you're storing the wet mud that you excavate, and you're in some kind of ponds, and you're dehydrating it?
Yeah, I'll just go through that real quick. No, well, it's being stored and de-watered in a fashion similar to during construction. So these, it would be placed here and placed in rows, so the wind can help dry it, you keep turning it, you're going to have a machine that, that turns the spoils. This is like a sediment trap, and what we're going to put in these is these skimmer devices, so it only draws water from the top layer, where, you know, where the stuff settles to the bottom, so the cleanest water is at the top. And then we'll have a means of filtering that water further as it dewaters. Well, yeah. That's similar to what we were insisting on. Yeah. Floating skimmer. Yeah, I think those things work great. We didn't have them on our last site plan, and just so you know, we address all of your comments. And the DEC will be reviewing that whole plan as well, so they'll, they'll have a moment. We've been working with them all along. But I, I have to tell you one thing, for a family business, we're like at two hundred thousand dollars for surveys for turtles, for artifacts, five hundred shovels, well, I mean, it's like, it's so expensive to, to do anything, we've got it like, it's a family business, we just want to bring our trucks in there. You know, come in and out, it's really, it's, it's tough to, to get it done.
What'd you just say about the, the good properties and the weapons?
Yeah, right.
That's a good property.
Yeah.
Or move an hour, you know.
Yeah.
No, come out of trade.
Cash soon, though.
I'm not going to be able to get a hamburger.
Oh, yeah. Is it protected by chicken or birdcage, do they bake burgers in? Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, should they come in and present?
Yeah.
Sue has to stand these, she has to be signed these.
I mean, that would be simple, we do have a meeting under the one.
Well, right, I, I just offered before, because I'm not trying to get like an official mission for many clients. Because I, I got the engineers working on the building, we owe them a lot of overtime and so forth. I don't know how quick this should go, really, we didn't like, but we missed that meeting. And that's going to be voted on actually. Just go public here.
Well, it's going to open in two hours.
All right. Yeah, then, I'll provide a citation.
Okay, that's good. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
We're kind of winding down what's expected for it.
Oh, yeah, with regard to the...
They drafted the law accordingly, what they wanted to get. There's only a couple.
The big picture, not just the small.
So regarding your potential that, should I just coordinate with Suzanne?
We should, we're going to be talking about this for a while.
Okay.
Just call her soon, don't let Suzanne have to talk to her.
Just a presentation, like, you know what? You can just, you can see it, and when everything's complete.
Tell my people, I'll tell a member, the guy's home, what you want to show.